Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education's Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is January 25th, 2017. We're holding this meeting in the Board Room at 42 West Madison Street, and I am Frank Clark. On behalf of my fellow Board members, I want to thank you all for coming today. The order of today's meeting will include an audit update. I'll make a statement about our progress towards our financial budget. We will have public participation, and we will conclude our meeting. And with that, Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this meeting was posted on Monday, January 23rd, 2017, at least 48 hours before this meeting at Board Room, Principal Office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on cpsboe.org.
Thank you. The Finance and Audit Committee meeting is called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Can you please strike the gavel, Mr. President?
Of course.
Thank you so much. I'll proceed with the roll call. Member Furlong?
Present.
Vice President Guzman?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Father Guerizini?
Present.
And President Clark?
Present.
We have five members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Forrest Claypool, our CEO, Ron Marmer, our General Counsel, and Dr. Janice Jackson, our Chief Ed Officer. Thank you.
Let's begin with the audit presentation. Mr. Holloway?
Good morning, Board. My name is Andrew O'Holloway. I'm the Chief Internal Auditor here at Chicago Public Schools, and I'd like to proceed with providing you with an audit update for this quarter's meeting. What I want to first start out with is talking about the risk management framework. This is a follow-up to our prior meeting. The Board requested that I come back and provide them with more information on our risk assessment outcomes, and that's the first thing that we'll talk about today. One thing I think is important to note about a risk management framework is that it's an ongoing process. It includes a number of items, starting with risk management to risk analysis, to embed risk processes, risk management processes into ongoing and daily decision-making, onto monitoring and reporting. CPS does have an ongoing risk management framework. We'll talk about that a little bit more later, but the process here was meant to refresh the risk assessment portion of the risk management framework so that we can identify and prioritize risk going forward, create a risk-based internal audit plan, and again, continue the process to enhance CPS's ongoing risk management process. The first thing that I want to talk about is the priority risk from the enterprise risk assessment, and I should step back and say that there are actually two risk assessments that were performed. We did a general enterprise risk assessment. We also did a compliance risk assessment. I'll go through the priority risk for both of those risk assessments with you today. The reason I did a separate compliance risk assessment is because we feel that the compliance footprint, the compliance requirements here at CPS are so vast that it deserved its own look, and so we'll talk about that again in just a bit. Any organization only has time to really focus on a certain number of risks at one point in time, so what we did is we worked with management during this process, had conversations with the Board, to come back with what we thought were the priority risks that needed to be focused on right now, and that's what you have in front of you. I won't go through every risk, but I just wanted to highlight a couple. The first one is academic program excellence, and the way that we define that risk is the inability possibly to effectively maintain and expand academic program excellence here at CPS. The impact of that is pretty clear. It would have a high impact on CPS if we were not able to do that. The likelihood of that happening, however, is low to moderate based on a number of factors. So, wanted to just provide that perspective of that risk. Another risk is funding, and funding is quite clear. You know, inability to provide funding to maintain academic gains, provide support services and meet capital needs, for example. The impact of that certainly could be high, and the likelihood of that is high, I think, for pretty obvious reasons that will be discussed over time. So, a couple of things I wanted to talk about with the priority risks is that they are based on a number of factors. We look at historical information, look at past audit reports, past management reports, data analysis, but most importantly, we have a, we have conversations with management to discuss the relative strengths and weaknesses of the organization, and we use management judgment. So, these are point-in-time risks. These risks may change over time, and they can also be significantly impacted by the level of management effectiveness, and that's the ability for management to monitor, mitigate, to control these particular risks. I'll move on to the compliance risk assessment. At the end of the presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the prior priority risk or anything else in the conversation today. From a compliance risk management perspective, the priority risks are outlined here. A couple that I wanted to just point out is grant monitoring. Grant monitoring is fairly significant for CPS, and it's not just for district schools, it's for charter schools and non-public schools because of the obligations that we have to non-public schools. It's essentially our inadequate monitoring that could happen of central office and district schools, inadequate monitoring of those, the usage of those grants. The impact of that could be moderate to high based on the risk assessment, and the likelihood of that happening, again, is moderate. Another risk to highlight is time and effort at a station, and essentially what this means is our ability to prove that we are expending our time, our employees, our staff, our management are expending their time working under the grant requirement so that their labor costs, for example, could be allocated to that grant. So, again, the impact of that could be moderate to high to the organization, and likelihood of that was ranked at low to moderate.
Sorry, Andrew. Can you go, can you go back? Can you tell me what, can you give an example of any grant monitoring we do for a non-public school?
Sure, and I may have someone on the team provide a little bit more insight to this, but one component could be, for example, Title I-type funding where if we have a, if there is a non-public school that's in a area where a Chicago public school receives Title I funding, low-income funding for different programs that could be available to students at that non-public school such as tutoring, we may be obligated to provide those same services to a non-public school.
Okay.
Another example might be for early childhood as well in the CBOs.
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
Also, could you, Andrew, could you talk a little bit about the environmental health and safety? I see it's got a high impact, and, you know, why so, and how do we compare? Like, what are the standards for that?
Yeah, I'll start with what, how do we define that risk? Really, what we're looking at, and probably the best example of this, something that occurred late last year, was the lead issue that popped up. Our ability to quickly be able to detect those types of issues and be able to mitigate and take action rather quickly. So, that's, I think, a clear example of that, and of course, as we saw the impact of that could be high to the organization particularly reputationally and the health exposure to our students. So, again, the likelihood of that, we felt as a, as a group talking with the management is moderate. I mean, we saw our reaction to the lead issue. I think that we felt as an organization, we reacted as swiftly and as effectively as we could, and we continue to monitor that. And I think that we have a facilities group, a safety and security group that's very active and out in, around our footprint, looking and monitoring these types of risks going forward. In terms of comparing this risk to other organizations, if that was part of your question, I could provide you feedback at the next meeting, but I don't have much comparison today.
Okay. Thank you.
And can I ask a question? Andrew, back to the previous, the enterprise risk assessment categories here. The first one, academic program excellence, and we believe that it's low to moderate likelihood that our academic program excellence would be impaired. What would go into that assessment, given, why I'm asking this, because given the landscape here of difficulties that we're facing, especially around budgets, why would we say that the impact would be low to moderate when that might be a flashpoint here for people to be concerned about, given, as I said, given the academic, the financial issues?
Absolutely. Absolutely. There was a lot of debate around the actual likelihood related to this risk, and we also think there's another component to this risk, and that is really time. And so, when you look at our current state, yes, we have financial challenges and things that we continue to struggle with, but we are maintaining those academic gains right now. We feel that we are in a position to continue to move those academic gains forward. Again, you know, the future, you know, can't be predicted, but we also feel that academic gains and losses to academic gains, they, it will take a number of months, probably a year or two, for example, for that to actually happen, and so, that gives us time to see those changes as they're happening and take mitigating actions very quickly and very swiftly. So, if you look at this point in time and the ability for us to continue to manage that and monitor that, particularly the education team, Janice, Ms. Jackson's team, it resulted in it being low to moderate at this point in time.
Yeah, so, I guess I'm asking this because one option in budget situations like the one we're facing would be cutting back the number of school days.
Absolutely.
That's gonna, that's gonna impact, and people are going to say, won't this impact our kids? Maybe Janice can talk a little bit about that. I think this is probably the major concern for parents and students is what's, and teachers, what's gonna happen with, because of the budget cuts?
Absolutely.
I mean, I would echo what Andrew said. I think that, you know, right now, we have a pretty, pretty tight reign on what's happening. We knew what our financial state was going into this school year, but without, you know, saying too much around what, you know, possible actions we will take to balance the budget, I would just say that this administration continues to make sure that whatever actions we take, we keep them away from the classroom because we know that that's really the place where a lot of the academic gains are coming from. And so, anytime we're trying to balance the budget, we take that into consideration as a first priority. As far as any actions like ending the school year or any other potential things that could be on the table, I think it's too early for us to, you know, really discuss the impact of that. The key message here is that the district is being forced to make decisions that we would not otherwise make, and so, that's the thing that I think the public should be made aware of, that nobody wants to be in a position to do any of the things that might impact academic excellence, but our reality is actually quite different.
Thank you.
Father, I just wanted to add a point, and Andrew, and I've had a lot of debate in this, so jump in here if you have a different perspective. When we looked at doing risk assessments, and something that I've kind of done a long time in my career, my perspective is you isolate each one of these and decide on its own merits, does it warrant a high risk? And clearly, funding is. Then, if you drew the conclusion that something was gonna happen with funding, I think it could ripple through everything, right? Because you have, average age of buildings is 76 years old, so if we don't have the funding, we clearly aren't gonna be able to maintain buildings in a state that would be acceptable to kids going to school. That would ripple through academic programs and so forth. At one point, when Andrew and I were going back and forth, which we've done several times in this document, is there was a perspective, this could be a higher risk than low to moderate. But my view was the CPS has a, has a documented success record since the late 90s of pretty much year after year, every metric on academic performance, despite the obstacles and challenges, getting better. So, you know, absent some strange thing happening in funding, not that strange things haven't already happened, but absent further, I mean, I would say that Janice's team has, there's great evidence that would say they will continue to make progress, and so, that's how we kept that separate. Clearly, somebody else could take another view and say, well, one triggers another, triggers another, but, but the way we did it was isolate the risk all on its own and then look at the progress of each category, and that's how we got to low to moderate risk, frankly. I can see another view of that, too, though.
Thank you. Thank you.
Couldn't have said any better.
One more comment. The purpose for having an exercise of this nature around enterprise risk is to have exactly this type of discussion. Ultimately, risk assessment, while you look at a lot of data and you try to look at that data on a factual basis, it boils down to judgment, and as frankly, Mark, I think your comments were right on the mark, you assess, particularly with respect to likelihood, you assess your best collective judgment. Some of this is a point in time, and frankly, it will change. If our financial situation deteriorates to a point that we cannot perform our academic duties, something I don't contemplate happening, obviously, that risk assessment on academic program excellence would be impacted by that. But as we stand here today, the academic performance of the Chicago public school system has actually been improving, and we have to contemplate that we will be able to sustain that, even in the face of the financial challenges that we continue to struggle with. But the fact is, this is an enterprise risk, it's something that we want the public to be aware of, and something you can see from the conversation among the Board members that we have a variety of thought processes around how we look at it. But it's, in many cases, awareness so we can position ourselves to deal with the issues as they, as they evolve. You want to continue?
Yes, thank you. We can proceed a couple of slides ahead. Wanted to talk about one of the key risk assessment outcomes, and this is something that we highlighted at the last meeting, and I won't spend too much time on it today, but I think there's a key takeaway that is very important for us to realize. An effort that was started in late 2015 and confirmed during the enterprise risk assessment and continues to evolve, we needed to look at how we provide assurance activities over our schools. We are a school district, we are a school system, we have, depending on the count, 600-plus schools, and we push all of our resources, nearly all of our resources out to those schools, so it's important for us to gain assurance that the control structure at those schools are effective. So, one thing that we wanted to do was look at how we identify schools that are in scope for audit. I think in the past, we may have had a goal as an organization to say that we want to audit every, each school every two to three years. We feel that we really need to take a risk-based approach to that, look at a number of factors, the last audit score, prior history of noncompliance, look at financial metrics, the volume of transactions, cash receipts, cash disbursements, cash on hand, academic information, some things that we've heard of lately in terms of attendance changes, grade changes, things of that sort. So, that may mean that there are some schools that are indeed audited, maybe every one to two years initially until their control structure improves, where you might have other schools that are a little bit more solid, they may be audited every three to four years. The goal here is to base all of our activities on the risk and where that risk exists across the organization. We also wanted to combine our school-based audit objectives into a comprehensive audit plan. In the past, you saw activities where internal audit would go out and do, in audit, there would be a grant audit, there could be an EL audit. My department was consolidated as the organization took actions last year, and our goal is to leverage our team in a, in a more thoughtful, risk-based way going forward, and I think, again, the risk assessment confirmed where we need to look. Some of the things that we also added to scope, we're looking at things such as facilities management, making sure that things like inspections and routine maintenance is occurring with things like boilers and furnaces and different things, checking CO detectors to make sure that they're operational, looking at school performance, data metrics, looking at attendance changes, grade changes, and different things like that. So, we will perform fewer school audits going forward, but we will have more comprehensive school audits for the schools that are included, and I think that's a win for the, for the district. The other thing that we have done is looked at, how can we expand our school audit process, our procedures, without actually going out to schools and disrupting schools, disrupting that, that infrastructure, that, that community? And one way that we can do that is to perform desk audits, and so, we are looking at ways that we can look at data continuously. Again, this is not new, this is something that we started here when I arrived in 2015, is something all departments have been doing for years, and it's necessary. The last thing I would say is that for the schools that we don't audit in a given year, we are looking probably in fall of this year or the next school year to do what we call controlled self-assessments, where we will send a very straightforward survey out to principals and ask them to provide responses, and we can gauge their control environment without actually going out there. But it also raises awareness with the principals, with the school leadership, of things that they should be thinking about, even if audit doesn't provide that advice to them directly.
It's like a checklist of things they should be.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, before I move into a audit update, I wanted to talk about risk management framework and responsibilities, and some of this has been discussed a little bit earlier, but I think it's important for us to make sure that we understand that at the end of the day, management is responsible for internal controls and making sure that there are strong internal controls in the organization. And when you look at how, I guess, kind of geeky auditors look at things, we have come up with a structure called the lines of defense. First line of defense is essentially management controls, internal control measures. Second line of defense is really the execution of operations. You have a monitoring and control risk component as operations happen. So, for example, with CPS, a financial controller is responsible for monitoring and controlling risk, safety and security, grant management, school quality management. Internal audit is the third line of defense, which is a validation and assurance activity. I mistakenly quoted this as the second line and had to correct myself. It is indeed the third line of defense, but I think it shows the important value that internal audit exercises here at CPS, but also the oversight responsibilities between senior and executive leadership and the Board overall. I think it's also important to understand that internal audit doesn't just validate and provide assurance. We don't just go out there and, you know, check the box and move on to the next audit. It is critical for us to work with management, provide advice, and to work with them as they have challenges, as they need to move through challenges, and again, it's not new to the audit community, it's something that we continue to do here at CPS. So, we're not just doing audits, I would say we're doing what we call management consulting-type activities, where if management has an issue and they cannot work through that issue, internal audit can help them work through that issue. If they can't figure out how to improve their control environment, we can help them improve that control environment, but at the end of the day, it is management that owns the internal controls structure here at the organization, or any organization for that matter.
Before you go on, Andrew, this kind of presentation and discussion around lines of defense are, they sound almost like an academic exercise. The fact is, this is how organizations are run, and organizations that are run well have a clear understanding of where these responsibilities lie. I think that, I think this has always been a part of how CPS has operated, but it's an absolutely integral and very, very focused part of how we are looking at the organization under CEO Claypool's lead. While this is an academic institution, and here, and that, that purpose is first and foremost, it is an institution, it is a very large institution, and without these types of controls, one being in place, two being monitored, and the execution has to be, should be, at least fairly flawless, you begin to have problems in so many places. So, while this, I think the word Andrew used a moment ago, it sounds a bit mundane. This is really how you run organizations, and it's a large focus of what happens behind the scenes day-to-day in concert with the primary purpose of academic excellence.
Thank you. So, I'd like to move on to highlighting a few key ongoing audit activities. One activity that's underway right now is what we call a cybersecurity diagnostic. At the end of the day, when you look at cybersecurity and the infrastructure and footprint that we have from an IT perspective to protect us both internally and externally, protect our data, we wanted to take a rather broad look at our cybersecurity capacity, look at it from a leadership and governance capacity, information risk management, how do we respond to incidences, and essentially come back and identify the relative strengths and weaknesses across our, again, IT infrastructure, based on IT standards, based on leading practices, and then work with management and leadership to develop a action plan to remediate gaps that, that may exist. And to give you a clear example of how we may approach some of this, when you think of things like network penetration, where you've heard of a number of network breaches happening across, you know, the country, across the world, some of them being rather significant, one approach that we will take as part of this effort is to bring in a white hack, white hack hacker-type expert, and we want them to try to break our system from the outside, from the inside, and figure out what those vulnerabilities are, and figure out ways that we can prioritize and then remediate those on a prioritized basis. So, that, that's just one example. Another example is how do we educate our employees to make them aware of some of the things that are happening day in and day out? We hear about phishing attempts all the time that come through different emails, and so, we need to make sure that we raise the awareness of our employees, of our staff, of our teams, to make sure that they can see those things and be able to react to them before IT is, because IT may not be able to see what's happening, you know, at that point in time. Again, this is just a diagnostic to make sure that we have the best footprint possible in the organization. To drop down a bit, we are right now planning a payroll audit. This is a very simple, very straightforward audit. We're looking at the key internal controls to make sure that we have integrity in payroll transactions, employee payments, employee checks, withholdings, and third-party remittances. We talked about school audits before in terms of the scope and how we're approaching school audits. School audits are always happening, pretty much, except for the summer when schools are out. It's our core activity, and we will continue to do that. One other point I wanted to make is we can recall last year that there were some deficiencies noted in our EL program, and we have worked with OSCE, our department that manages that program, to make sure that we have a strong and rigorous monitoring and follow-up process. All schools that had deficiencies or issues last year were provided with action plans or remediation plans to help them improve their EL capacity and provide that to the students that needed them. We are following up in concert with OSCE to make sure that those action plans are being implemented and that they are indeed effective. I want to highlight a couple district-wide audits as well. The first is a closed school asset review. This is really more than a closed school asset review. We conducted a review to look at our fixed asset processes across the district with also a focus on the assets that were impacted during the school closures several years ago. CPS has millions of dollars invested in assets, and they are assets that range from something as, as, as big as a boiler or a furnace down to textbooks, to laptops, to tablets. There are a number of things that happen, or a number of types of assets that exist in the organization. We wanted to make sure that we had a strong control footprint from acquisition to disposal related to fixed assets. So, as we went through and conducted the audit, we gained an understanding of the processes that we employ to track assets, both on a general basis and related to the school closures. We did feel, that we do feel that there are opportunities for, for improvement, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit, but one thing I wanted to point out is the assets related to the school closures. While we weren't able to understand exactly where all of those assets went, we are fairly confident that those assets did end up in other welcoming schools or other schools across the district. We feel that there are a number of reasons why we're not able to fully recreate the transfers of those assets. I think a big part of that is the project leadership responsible for this activity are no longer with the district. There's a lack of available supporting documentation, there's not a real clear audit trail. I'll get into a little bit of that in a moment. Additionally, we do not have a ongoing relationship with the vendor that was involved in that process. But again, audit is fairly confident that a significant portion of these school, these assets did make it to welcoming schools and other schools, as illustrated by a couple activities. We do know that CPS had a number of open houses where we would have assets at warehouses, for example, where principals and school leadership could come through and essentially inspect the assets and take what they needed back to their schools, particularly, again, the welcoming schools. There were also, so those were more formal events, there were more informal activities where a school could just call up the warehouse and say, I needed something, drop by the warehouse and pick something up and take it onto their school. So, again, we see that activity, that it happened. The reason there's not a clear audit trail is it appears as though the primary goal is to get these assets from the closed school to the welcoming school. The priority- The priority was not tracking the movement of those assets. And so as such, we don't have a clear audit trail. And again, the group that was responsible is both from a leadership perspective and from a vendor perspective are no longer available. I think one thing to point out is that I also believe, my team believes, that the prior activity relied on a normal day-to-day process for a, what I'll call, an extraordinary event with the number of schools that were closed. And I think the normal process collapsed under the pressure of what was going on. So going forward, there are a number of recommendations that we have made to management and management is taking action. Again, we feel that there are strong policies and controls over assets as they exist right now, but there is opportunity for improvement. We are currently implementing a integrated system to help us more effectively track assets. There's one person that is going to be designated for the oversight of all aspects of fixed assets, and we will continue to perform fiscal inventories at the end of the school year. But I think we also need to think about other cycle count activities. And a cycle count is where you would basically prioritize your assets by cost and by the ability for them to be misappropriated, your assets that are most at risk. You would count those more frequently than you would count things like pencils, for example. So those are things that we are entertaining, that management is entertaining and looking to put in place. But I do want to, again, reinforce the fact that we do feel that these assets, a significant portion of them, did make them, did make their way to welcoming schools and other schools and that we do have a good footprint now, but there's always room for improvement. Fixed assets are inherently difficult to track, especially when you look at things like textbooks, laptops, et cetera. I'm not trying to marginalize the importance, just trying to give some perspective.
Can I have a nice comment or question, Frank?
Yes, please.
Andrel, it seems that, especially when we have, when we're closing a school, that there should be a process in place for some inventory assessment of what's at that institution, that particular site, and then kind of tracking where it will go. Maybe at another time, we could talk about what will be the process going forward where we can be assured that all the materials, all the assets at a particular institution are going to end up at another school being used for their appropriate purpose. It seems we don't, we don't, I don't know at least the, what is the process for tracking all that? It sounds like it broke down.
Absolutely, absolutely. I work with the finance group that is responsible for this and will provide a joint update to the board.
That'd be great. That'd be good.
Moving on to another district-wide audit highlight, I wanted to talk about a options attendance audit. This is an audit that actually started in 2016 and is continuing in terms of a refresh, if you will. So CPS has another, a number of option schools, which include alternative learning option program schools, or ALOPS, alternative charter and contract schools, and safe schools. And these are schools that generally serve students that need a new or different pathway ultimately to high school graduation. What internal audit sought to do was to confirm the accuracy of attendance data that was reported by these schools. When we look at the results from counts that we did in 2016, and we did four counts over that period of time, and I think we started our first one in May and we ended in October for those four counts. What we noted is that when you look at the impact attendance, impact is essentially one of our student information systems where you report attendance district-wide, it's a common system. We noted that attendance on average for these schools, as reported in the impact, was 52% of enrollment, which is significantly less than the district average at just under 94%. Additionally, when you look at the average head count based on internal audit counts, we felt that for those same days where the 52% enrollment number was derived, our counts only averaged 44%. So not only are the attendance levels that are in, the attendance levels are low, even when you look at impact, they're even lower when we go out there and perform our own head counts. I think there are a number of reasons for the deficient controls over attendance reporting. I think one key factor is that option schools aren't held fully accountable. There is some accountability, I do want to mention that, but they could, there could be much stronger accountability if funding was linked to attendance, not just to enrollment, for example. I think that attendance verification controls are less than ideal, and I also believe that the level of oversight could be improved through the innovation and incubation department. I think that, like a lot of departments, there are staffing concerns and there are only two individuals that are responsible for managing and providing oversight to this entire program. So going forward, some of the key recommendations that we have been talking with management about are looking at different alternatives to the funding model, something that, again, factors in attendance to that funding model primarily. Another recommendation is to perform reasonable checks on impact attendance data. You need to verify that information that's actually coming into impact. And so we will continue to work with I and I and collaborate with them, and I will have my team go out there and we'll perform periodic counts and some random accounts that are unannounced. When you look at the quantitative impact of this finding, it's rather significant. If funding were based on impact data versus enrollment, we estimate that CPS could save $15 million annually. If you base the funding on the average head count that my team noted when we were doing our counts, you could save $12 million annually. There's a big range here in terms of what could happen, and I think part of that is really based on CPS and management's decisions in terms of what actions they would like to take. Another thing that I would like to point out is that we have started doing counts again. I think we did some counts in November and possibly early December. And while the average attendance reported in impact has improved to 60% of enrollment, there continues to be a gap between what impact reports versus what my team counts when we go out. Again, for the last count, impact stated 60%, my team noted 55%.
Yeah, there's a couple comments.
Could you just clarify for me again what an ALOP school is?
And I may bring up Mary Bradley to provide more insight. An ALOP school is essentially an alternative high school for students. So students that, for various reasons, are outside of the normal high school environment, this is a alternative for them to continue their path towards a degree.
It would seem to me, I might be really off-base here, but it seemed to me that if there's a crisis in attendance, both reporting but actual attendance, that we have a bigger problem. And I would hope that we would take a hard look at whatever funding issues are going to arise from that because, and I'm just thinking out loud here, penalizing a school that's already in trouble by cutting funding could actually make things worse. And I'm sure Janice has a lot of thought about that. We'd have to figure, if you have a school that's for very difficult situations where kids have got to be taught in a different environment, and that environment isn't working for them, there might be a lot of reasons why it's not working for them, and penalizing them with a financial formula could actually make things worse. Janice, am I making any sense here?
No, I think it's a logical response to what Andrel is presenting, but I think what we want to underscore is that there are a lot of opportunities for savings in these schools. When we went out and did the attendance audit, and one thing that Andrel didn't talk about was the academic audit that ONS did as well, there was a big gap. And so we know that these schools may need additional per pupil dollars in order to educate the children, but there is a lot of opportunity in some of these schools because we have rosters that, you know, have numbers much, much higher than the average daily attendance. And if, in fact, kids aren't coming to school, we want to make sure that those schools, at the very least, are using those resources to get those students back into schools. And so if we don't see a case of that, or if we don't see that there's been an effort to reengage those students, I think it's appropriate to take those funds back so that they can be redistributed in other areas where we have children actually coming to school.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm thinking, we have so many fixed costs, you know, if a teacher in front of 15 kids costs the same amount as a teacher in front of seven, or 25. So that's a fixed cost. I just, the funding formula as a way of dealing with this problem could, just could create more problems, is all I want to say.
I am certain this assumption that management is continuing to analyze and address and take action.
The only other point I'd say is some of the rollback has been incremental, to your point, Father Garanzini, so it's not, you know, a clean sweep. And I think what Andrel is pushing is for maybe a deeper one, but it has been incremental. And so far, I would characterize it as appropriate.
Okay.
Janice, could I add, and Father Garanzini, and correct me if Janice, if you think I'm wrong, but the other issue is accountability for the operators of schools. They have a responsibility not just to teach whoever shows up, but to get the kids in school, to motivate them to do whatever it takes to knock on doors. Most, the good schools have teams that do that. If a school is just there to try to pocket a bunch of money and not serve kids and rip us off, we got to stop that.
Yeah.
Almost done here, just a couple more slides. I wanted to highlight also accountability audits that are performed by my team. And what you have in front of you are a couple tables. The table on the left provides a description of the types of audits that we perform in this, in this area, time and attendance audits, misappropriation of funds, testing, enrollment issues. And then on the other side, you'll see the outcomes. There have been nine cases that we have referred over to the IG. We have 14 instances where discipline is pending, and there were also 14 issues where the action taken as a result of the audit was termination likely, including a do not hire indication on the employee's file. One thing I wanted to highlight in terms of one particular recent activity, but again, I want to point this out by reference because this is something that, you know, we have seen a number of times, we continue to address, and that is time and attendance issues. We performed a school audit and noted that there were a number of issues related to payroll. As a result, five employees are awaiting discipline due to misuse of benefit time, swiping in for other employees, or extended day payments received for time not actually worked. I think it's important to note that when CPS sees these issues, time abuse, sick day abuse, it results in employee termination. And so we will move these actions forward and continue to investigate them when we do see them. I won't highlight the others that are there, you do have the information in front of you, but a couple of things I wanted to highlight is that my office and the inspector general's office, we meet quite regularly and we discuss work that's being performed, and we coordinate our activities as deemed prudent. In addition to that, there are a number of other CPS departments and staff that continue to refer things directly over to the IG, and my office is not involved, and we do not need to be involved in that activity. The last thing that I want to highlight is the internal audit follow-up process, and I highlight this just to provide information to the board, but also because you will have some information on open audit findings coming up at the next meeting. I don't consider the audit lifecycle complete until any findings that were identified in a report have been remediated, and we feel that those controls are now effective or stronger than they were before. So it's important for us not only to get reports issued and provide timely action, timely information to management to take action, it's also important for us to go back and validate that those issues have been resolved. So what you have in front of you is essentially a lifecycle of that process from the definition of findings or observations all the way to audit closure. My team will focus on the findings, the observations that are risk-ranked high or likely moderate, but we will track them all. We will provide the board with an update on this topic at the next board meeting in terms of sort of a demarcation, in terms of how far back we're going to go. Any findings issued to any CPS department since July 1 of 2016 going forward, and we will also make sure that we highlight to the board any repeat findings because I know that is of a special concern, not only to the board, but to management. We need to make sure that, you know, once they tell us once, we fix it and we don't let that finding, that issue continue to persist. So that's it for my presentation. I'll answer any questions that may be.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the consistent updates on all your efforts. I think the part that, I think for me, and I know you've heard this from the board before, is wherever possible on some of these, especially the ones that you've highlighted, if you could sort of quantify the exposure, you know, that the board has and sort of potential efficiencies that we've been able to sort of either recapture back or sort of minimize that exposure, that would be really helpful for us to sort of know the value of what your team is doing. I think this is super valuable and these regular updates are valuable, but it's also helpful to quantify it as well.
We'll make sure we do that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Andrel.
I'll turn it over to Ron DeNardo. Thank you.
Ron, you can state where you're at. We're not going to have a financial update at this time because what I am going to provide the public with are dates when we will hold hearings to discuss the revised budget that I plan to bring to the board for a vote at our February board meeting. Thank you. Now it's time for public participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m. this morning, and, Mr. President, we have no registered speakers.
Good morning, Board. Ron DeNardo, Senior Vice President of Finance. I wanted to have a short CAFR presentation. The CAFR really is the...
You want to explain, state what a CAFR is for?
It's a comprehensive accounting financial report. It's basically the external auditors report on our finances, and they determine, they do an external audit, and they determine whether our financial statements fairly represent our operations. We got an unqualified, clean opinion with no material weaknesses for 2016, and I would like to congratulate our new controller who did a great job in bringing that audit to Now, I pulled out some key information from the CAFR, and I use the operating fund to really show our revenues versus expenses, and it's sort of an approximation of cash. So in 2015, our results of operations ended up with a $700 million deficit. So if you end up with a deficit from operations, you have to borrow. So that started some of our short-term borrowing. In 2016, which was this audit, we didn't get our, we didn't get about $700 million of revenue that we had planned on. $480 million was from, we didn't get from the state, which was for our equal pension funding. They also didn't pay us $101 million in time, so that wasn't within our revenue recognition period. We were able, as a management team and board, to be able to cut out $200 million of expenses and still have, you know, good academic progress to try to stem some of those revenue problems. Also, I wanted to note for 2017, where we were resolving a billion-dollar budget because in 2016, there were some one-time items that we're trying to solve 2016. We are still continuing to fight for a balanced budget in 2017, despite the $215 million hole that Governor Rana has put on our budget by vetoing our normal cost pension for funding. So we're, what we're trying to show is that we are making progress each year, and you, as a board, have been guiding us and supporting us on very, sometimes difficult, decisions, but you can see that that is trying to move CPS in the right direction. And those short-term financing, when you see those deficits, that's short-term financing. Even when we balance the budget, that doesn't create money to reduce the short-term borrowing we have, it just presents it from growing. So we appreciate all the financial guidance and support that you have given us throughout the year, and you could see that we are in a, what I would call, very interesting, well, it's just a difficult battle, but we're fighting, and we're fighting for a balanced budget.
Ron, just before the board's edification, just to make clear, these are fiscal years you have on the board, right? So we're talking about 2015, that means the 2014-15 school year, then the 15-16 school year, and then the one we're in now, the 16-17 school year?
Yes.
Okay, so those are fiscal years. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Does that include your comments?
Yes.
Two observations. First, CEO Claypool, thanks for the clarification. Some people may have thought those were calendar years, so we should be precise in what we're talking about. And what you laid out is a dichotomy that many struggle with, particularly that people are not close to these issues. On one side, we have the issue of having a balanced budget, and what you show here is the effort to move towards a balanced budget, a balanced budget, which we will have in for the fiscal year 2017, reflecting all of the, I think, very, very difficult decisions that have to have been made to get spending in line, revenues in line with expenses. However, the other issue that we face as a board that is a longer-term problem, because it's a problem that goes back for many, many years, is the cash deficiency. And so we struggle with two issues. We can have a balanced budget, but that does not mean we have enough cash, and indeed, we don't, and we're struggling through that. But we are at least getting our house in order in terms of aligning our revenues with our expenses. And Ron and his team and our CEO, with board support, are looking very, very carefully at how we approach our cash issue and do that in a manner that is the least disruptive to the academic efforts, going back to some other conversations we had earlier. So two issues. Balanced budget, we absolutely will have one. Cash deficiency, a long-term problem, and will require some thoughtful, I won't call long-term solutions, because I'm not sure we have a long-term period to resolve that, but will require solutions over time. Thank you very much, Ron. Ron, introduce here the person you lauded so much.
That's our new controller, Melinda Gildart.
Melinda? And her name's not Jason?
It's Carrie.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one. So just for clarification, I know I know this, but just to make sure that everybody else does, the $107 million, that was due by June 30 of 16, but received after June 30 of 16, right?
Yes, we just received it at the end of December.
And then, second question, it's more of a perspective for those in the room. So in the fiscal year ended June of 15, we had a $710 million deficit of expenses greater than revenue. If you include the revenue for 16 that we received late, we had a $430 million deficit. So the, kind of, the first year in management of the Forrest team, you guys took $280 million of deficit out of the system, and this year, you're going to try and take $430 million out, if you use the... So maybe just take a second and say, what are the top two or three concerns? And I'm indifferent whether it's you or Forrest that you want to share, the top two or three concerns you have to do that. Last year's progress was incredible, and this year is even, you set even bigger targets for the team.
I would say the state funding, the $215 million is an issue that we are definitely dealing with. I would say what's going on better this year, we are working very closely with Dr. Jackson and Denise Little, and education is very closely linked with us in as we come up with our solution to resolve our budget. We are trying to operate as efficient as possible in every way that we can, and that's why our internal audit is important, because we don't have a dollar to waste, so we have to be efficient and make sure that we can carve out as much waste as we can.
I would add that the other big challenge is the one, is the, this budget, as you recall, is balanced with $300 million of savings that have to be accomplished during the course of the year through implementing management reforms and efficiencies. And so that's a daily, daily struggle. As you might imagine, we have some categories that we've targeted that were below where we need to be, but then we've had others where we've done better than expected. And, you know, we seem to be, right now, we've captured right now about half of the savings. So we're pretty much on track, very, very close to where we need to be, so we're confident. But it's something that every single day, the managers, the department leaders, Ron's team, you know, work at every single day, constantly coordinating in meetings, constantly looking where we're at, trying to solve problems, so, because we know we have to hit that 300 by the end of the year, and that's the other big challenge. And of course, Governor Rahnner, to Ron's point, has just made their, you know, has made, you know, in the middle of the year, created a new problem for us that we're all collectively dealing with.
And the most important is cash is king. So we have to constantly monitor our cash. Our property taxes come in twice a year. You know, we're subject to when the state pays us, so we're constantly forecasting our cash, monitoring our cash, along with monitoring our budget.
Ron, it occurs to me that this will be true for the board meeting also. Most people, even those that may follow us closely, may not understand the cash deficit and what created it, because it goes back for many, many years, and it's hard for people to grasp. If you figure out how to have a balanced budget, you align your expenditures along with your revenues, thank you, that you should be fine. Don't understand that we have a carryover of a deficit in cash that goes back many years. In a layman's term, can you make a statement to why that cash deficit continues to plague us?
The issue is, once you have a cash deficit, so for instance, I showed you in 2015 that there would be a cash deficit, until your revenues are above expenses and you create a cash surplus, where you have extra money to actually pay it off. So once you have a short-term cash deficit and you borrow, you don't have, you continue to roll it forward, because until you create budget surplus, if you have a budget deficit, eventually, you either need, you need a budget surplus in order to create cash to get rid of that, you know, that financing. Now, that budget surplus could be new revenue, but at some point, if you had a deficit, you need a surplus to balance it out.
So succinctly, you're balancing the budget, because we focus so much on that. Obviously, it's something we should do. It does not reduce the cash deficit, it means it just doesn't get worse.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so we were, we're doing this over time, so our first strategy was get, you know, try to get the budget under control, then we'll get at cash also.
And to your point, Mr. President, as the board's aware, the other reason it's critical is because that short-term credit card of cash is maxed out. It's maxed out in terms of the maximum collateral that can be loaned against, it's bumping up against state law. So the criticality of continuing to balance the budget is, for that reason, is, you know, is fundamental. But then, as Ron points out, and you pointed out, by balancing the budget, we don't make the problem that we inherited worse. And the next step then is, as Ron said, to begin improving the financial situation so that we can begin paying down, paying down that credit card, so that the district at least has a little breathing room moving forward. So, you know, that's the challenge the board has been, I think, very helpful and supportive of, and Ron's team has made remarkable progress. And it's the reason also why we have to, you know, not only continue our reforms here, but also continue our battle with Governor Rahnner and his attempts, his repeated attempts to harm the children of Chicago in order to advance his own agenda by treating our kids in our system differently than all the other school districts in the state.
Thank you very much. Ron, do you have any other comments?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Board members? Thank you very much, Ron. And we have no one...
No, sir, there's no registered speakers, so we can proceed with the motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.